The time is six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Alderman Moyer?
Yes, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Second Ward Alderman David Parker, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker, Alderman at Large Sonia Berg, the committee of the whole and city council meetings of February nine, twenty twenty-one.
Second that motion?
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Waldron. Roll call, please. Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams? Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Do we have any questions on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we'll go right into the agenda. Item number one, amended twenty twenty-one capital improvement plan. Marty Von Bebe presenting, and Joe Kullenbeck.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Joe Kullenbeck is on the line. And I just want to introduce him by saying that city staff, especially Joe and Laura, a bunch of other people worked very hard on putting this twenty-one CIP together. And I'm gonna let Joe present the technical stuff, and we just ask for your approval this evening, so we can move forward with all the projects that we want to do this year. So, Joe, take it away.
Thank you, Marty. Thank you, Your Honor, Council. Last time we presented the twenty twenty-one CIP budget to you, you guys had some suggestions for us. We made those suggestions and improvements on the spreadsheet that was sent out to you earlier today. And just like to highlight some of those for you. David, you have a short, very short slideshow you can navigate for me.
Joe, I'm navigating it for you.
Okay. Really, this slideshow is really more of a map for your information, so you can get a better reference of where things are at. One of the main changes we took, we took Eighteenth Avenue off of the the twenty twenty-one CIP list in hopes of securing grant funding for that one in the near future. We do feel like that project is heavily, as it's traveled, is a very good candidate for some task of funding opportunities. So, we're gonna push that one back. It's still on a burner. We still have it in our sites, but we want to try to leverage our money as much as possible. So, we removed that. We added, in lieu of that, a resurfacing project, Eleventh Avenue B, Twenty-seventh Street to Twenty-ninth Street, and a reconstruction of Eleventh Avenue C from Fifty-second Street Court to Fifty-fourth Street. We also had to move Twenty-ninth Street off of an original list just for funding to make everything kind of work out. We just, again, don't, I'm planning on not doing it, but just kind of pushing it back. So, this is a quick map of our construction projects for this year. The red lines are reconstructions, blue lines are resurfacing. You've got two little purple lines down there, those are utility projects. And then the black lines are gonna be our bike way and bike path projects. These are all kind of outlined in your, on your spreadsheet that you received. And this is, like I said, this is kind of a redo with some of these suggestions that we had. Does anybody have any questions? I mean, feel free to jump in at any time. This presentation is really kind of short. It's really an overview of this, what we have later on the
Joe? Joe, we lost your audio. Just so you know, we can't hear you. Alderman Parker, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on this, if that's okay, if I go ahead. Kind of all over the place on this.
Go ahead.
But, so, one thing I noticed was, just looking at this map, it becomes extremely evident that most of the construction and overlays and everything are happening east of I-74. And I just wanted to verify that going forward, we would be seeing some projects over in the older section of town, which would be west of I-74. You know, there's a lot of roads over here that do need help. And although I support this plan, I just want to be sure that we are spreading our resources throughout the city and not just focusing on the east side of town. That's my first one. Second one, I noticed in here that we have some money in there for water. What was that? It is the water project, the trenchless and lining program, red water sites. I just was wondering, how many sites is this going to impact? What are we gonna be down to from a red water perspective?
Joe, do you have audio back?
Tony might be able to answer.
Is Tony on the line?
Tony?
Hey, Your Honor, this is Tony Lodi. I believe the answer to Alderman Parker's question is five sites for water, and it will get us down into the low twenties for the red water discoloration locations.
So, Tony, five individual addresses?
Five streets or five water main projects.
And how many individual properties or service locations does that include? Because it's three-quarters of a million dollars, a lot of money. I want to be sure we're seeing a lot of homes being cared for.
Understood. I don't have the total number of homes that are impacted by the construction. I would tell you that it's probably two or three homes that are directly impacted by the discoloration per location. So, a total of about fifteen homes that are on our list of seventy-ish homes that are experiencing the discoloration problem.
And I just was wondering, is that typical, is that a typical cost per address? Is what, top of my head math, I'm guessing fifty, sixty thousand per address?
Well, there are a number of other homes that are affected by the water main, these water main construction projects. The homes that are directly connected to the mains that will be rehabbed in this project number probably over a hundred.
Oh, okay. All right. But that's good. I appreciate the implication. I really have no knowledge, point of reference, just trying to establish what that point of reference is. I'm really glad we're getting down to the minimal number of red water sites. It'll be a great day when we don't have any. So, great job on keeping that going. And Mayor, I have one more, right off the bat, if you don't mind?
How about it? Thank you.
Okay, so, I did notice, gosh, I wish I could pick it up here. It is the Jane Addams retaining wall. I know at one point we talked about a retaining wall. Another point, we talked about smoothing that back so it wouldn't need a retaining wall, so that, you know, in the going forward, that there just wouldn't be anything to replace, because it'd just be a slope as opposed to an actual wall. Why did we end up with a wall? Is there not enough room there, or what was the story with that?
I'm back on, I lost audio for a while there. I apologize, I missed something. We are going to remove the wall completely and slope the hillside.
Okay. So, it's not replace the retaining wall, it's remove the retaining wall and slope it back?
Correct, correct.
Good. Okay, cool. That's great.
We were, the school gave them options, and that was what we came up with and agreed upon, so.
Okay, cool. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Alderman Waldron?
Just so we can get it on the floor, I'll make a motion to approve the amended twenty twenty-one capital improvement program.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Potter. Are there any more questions from the council? Or Joe, did you have anything else you wanted to share with us before we make a decision?
No, I mean, the other slides are, again, just maps of what's on the spreadsheet in front of you. They're just more for reference, more than anything. This is our PCI rating. It's in our GIS. It's a layer that we have that's available. Next slide, I believe, might even, oh, there, those are two alleys we plan to reconstruct. Those have not changed. And then, just so the council knows, we've already began our twenty twenty-two planning. So, we have a list of projects that we're gonna prepare to bring forward to you, so you have it early, and we can, that we added was a million dollars in outside engineering for projects to get a year ahead on design, and that's where we're at in our process. So, that's all I have. If you guys have any other question, be happy to answer those.
Are there any questions by the council? Alderman Parker?
Sorry, I guess I have one more question. So, near the bottom of the spreadsheet, it's parking lots and service roads for council consideration. What roads and parking lots are we talking about here?
Those are gonna be city-owned and park, parking lots. We got out before the snow hit this winter, and I believe we got all of our parking lot surveyed and looked at the conditions. If we have a few left to get, we'll get those as soon as the snow is melted away, hopefully. I think everybody's hoping for that sooner than later, but we're gonna bring those forward once we kind of identify the work and the locations that we want to do in those spots. But those are gonna be city-owned parking lots.
Yeah, I guess I'd assume they would be, but that's good to know. So, those will be coming back to us?
Yeah, we'll bring those back once we, like I said, once we have them identified and prioritized.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please. Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. The next item is I got resolution for maintenance, twenty twenty-one capital improvement projects. Joe Kullenbeck?
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. So, the next several items for you tonight are gonna be consideration to approve a resolution for maintenance to utilize our MFT funding. This first one includes our twenty twenty-one seal coat program for a budget amount of one hundred thousand dollars, and a nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars for our asphalt resurfacing projects. Those projects are listed below. They're also on your sheet. They include Fifty-second Street Court, Twenty-fourth Street, Twenty-third Street, Twenty-second Street, Eleventh Avenue B, and Twenty-sixth Street. Staff is recommending approval, so we can move forward with our MFT funding process.
So, moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg, a second by Alderman Waldron. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Was this on item two or for all of those?
I think we have to do them separately, don't we?
Thank you. Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. The next item is item number three, I got resolution for improvement, Eleventh Avenue C. Joe?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, this is to fund this project with motor fuel tax funds. A resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code needs approval by city council. This project is Eleventh Avenue C from Fifty-second Street Court to Fifty-fourth Street, and the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Staff is recommending approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, and I believe the second was from Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please. Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item number four is Twenty-sixth Avenue. Joe?
A resolution authorizing the approval of improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for use of motor fuel tax funds. This project is for Twenty-sixth Avenue from the thirty-eight-hundred block to Forty-first Street. The motor fuel tax portion of this project that we're planning to build is nine hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and forty-five. The total project cost is more than that, but the resolution is in that amount, that's what we plan to spend using these funds. This is the project behind the school, or the high school, and staff is recommending approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Item five is regarding Thirty-Fourth Avenue. Joe?
And staff is recommending approval for a resolution authorizing a resolution under the Illinois Highway Code for motor fuel tax. This project is Thirty-Fourth Avenue, Fifty-third Street to Fifty-Sixth Street Place and Fifty-Sixth Street Court, and also Fifty-Sixth Street Place to the Dead End. The amount of this project is seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion? Alderman Parker?
Does this complete Thirty-Fourth Avenue?
Completes all.
This does complete. This is the last stretch of Thirty-Fourth Avenue. We'll complete that corridor.
Perfect.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please. Alderman Potter, I'm sorry, Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. We do not have another this evening, so we're gonna move into the informational. Oh, we do have another. We have two others.
Keeping errant to the bullpen. Thank you, Mayor. We have two others. The first, I alerted the council, I sent you on email over the weekend. So, we're working on, as you know, the, Alderman, Alderman, Went, the communications committee has made a recommendation. We're hiring Strategia to do the communications piece. But the laws are such that we have to be careful about when that communications piece becomes lobbying, and we have to be careful to have a separate agreement for lobbying, and we also have to have, track the money separately. So, we have a separate proposal from Strategia. Didn't have time to get it on the agenda for tonight, but the House is moving quickly. The new Speaker is working to have them work remotely. They're changing the House rules to do that. And because we have important issues, which we talked about today at PMT, for example, with the I-74, the bridge, and some legislation there, as well as the initiatives surrounding the riverfront and the campus, we want to bring that forward to you to say, to make sure we have a consensus to move forward. We'll put it on the next agenda, but it's in two weeks. And in that time, the House is gonna meet, and so we want to make sure that we have our ducks in a row, that the lobbying is called out publicly, and that we'll approve the proposal in two weeks. But we want to make sure that it's brought to people's attention that we are hiring a lobbyist to assist in this effort. So, what I'm looking for tonight is just some consensus to move forward in that regard.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I would.
So, moved? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Other number two?
On the council agenda this evening, number ten, is the agreement with Ostrom Painting and Sandblast. And last meeting, you said, let's do extra work to use the full budgeted amount of two fifty. So, the way it was published, we needed to correct that, and we, I've given the correct wording to the clerk, and I've added a provision to that resolution now that says, and staff is authorized to negotiate change order number one to add additional work to bring the contract sum to an amount not to exceed the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, between last week and this week, with your direction in the meeting, I just wanted to alert you that ten has changed, to make sure everybody's on board with what you'll see, and that is, the base amount that we used to ward the contract is the one seventy-six figure, but we've added a provision, a further resolution, that says it's, the additional work is to be done for an amount not to exceed the contract sum of two fifty. So, I just wanted to alert you to that when it's read by Madam Clerk later.
Thank you. Thank you, Dirk. We will now move to our informational. We presented this evening by our Parks Recreation Director, Eric Griffith. It's the Parks Recreation Five-Year Budget. Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So, back in late October, early November, when we were wrapping up budget discussions for the twenty twenty-one budget, Alderman Went had brought up about postponing an additional four hundred thousand for capital improvements and some vacancies in the department until a five-year budget was presented. So, at the end of this, I would ask for that additional approval for CIP. And that, and that funding is tentatively in this handout. So, the first page, and if you have any questions as I go through this, please let me know. The first page is the Captain's Table budget. So, originally, that was all lumped in together with the Parks Department and the Captain's Table. Finance has separated that out. It gives us a clearer picture of what the amount that the Captain's Table owns, and then gives us a clearer picture on the five-year budget for the Parks and Rec. So, that's what the first page is. And as you can see, their funding balance at the end of the year, it continues to go down year by year. They've got a twenty-year loan that will be gradually paid back over the lifetime of that twenty years. So, any questions over at the Captain's Table? Okay. The next page is the five-year budget for the Parks Department. The two lines that I would like to point out, the first line is in blue. That is transfer in from the general fund for Parks, or for the city council for consideration in twenty-two through twenty-five. The net change in balance, even with the additional consideration from the city council, the four areas in red are the deficits at the end of each year. So, that five-year budget was put together with revenue going up roughly about two percent each year. That's about what it's been the last couple of years. And then, the expenditures staying pretty flat. Every other year, there's about a one percent increase in expenditures, other than the chargebacks, like IT, vehicle leases, liability insurance, and salaries. Those have gone up at the proportion that they have been the last so many years. So, when you take the funding in consideration from city council and the numbers that are in red, there's about one and a half million dollar deficit in the next four years, twenty-one through twenty-five. So, the last about page and a half are the department recommendations. If other funding does not become available, are the different revenue increases and cuts that we'll have to make to the department. And that is the very colorful last page of these. So, I'll take any questions, concerns the council has. This was a great, I will say, this was a great exercise for our department. Me being only here for about ten months, I was really able to dive into every part of Parks and Rec, so.
Well, thank you.
Exercise.
We'll start with Alderman Went?
Yeah.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks, Eric. I think, as you just mentioned, I think this exercise is something good, and my hope is that eventually we get at the city level to do five-year budgets and projections as well. But I think that that really kind of gives you a roadmap of where we're going and understanding decisions today and how they affect the future. I did have a couple of questions. You had said at the beginning, I know that there was the concern regarding hiring some additional individuals, and that's when this five-year budget, both for Parks and for the library, came up, and we all determined that that was a good idea. But you had also mentioned something about the four hundred thousand dollars capital project?
No, so, the four hundred thousand was the positions and the capital improvements together.
Oh, okay. And the capital improvement, I think that was just on the sheet that we
So, it's, yeah, so, it's two hundred and fifty thousand for CIP, and then a hundred and fifty thousand for salaries and benefits.
Okay, yeah. I was gonna say, because Sam Moyer and I have been working on the CIP, and that two fifty was included. So, now, we're just talking about the hiring of the additional individuals. So, one question, the three hundred thousand, then three twenty-five, three fifty, where did that number come from as your determination for the blue line through there? Why did you limit it to that amount?
So, that was, after talking over with Carol and finance, that was a number that we thought was reasonable as we come out of this COVID-19, that hopefully, you know, that would be the minimum consideration. We would, obviously, would like to ask for more, but the city has to be in that financial standing for that.
Well, I appreciate it, because my gut reaction was three hundred's probably not enough, because as we all know, the property tax pie is getting eaten up more and more by the pensions, and so, that's where the historic revenue for the park has been reduced. And so, I appreciate that number being there, but I agree with you. I think it's gonna have to be a higher number in those upcoming years to ensure that our parks provide the service that I think we all want.
Basically, when Carol and I were putting these numbers together, we didn't want to ask for five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars right off the gate, but we wanted to show a work plan of if this, that three hundred thousand was the only additional amount that we could get, that we do have a plan put together that we can make, you know, that budget year work with these different cuts.
Thank you. We have a question from Alderman Waldron.
Alderman Went got most of mine already, but I wanted to speak for the Park Board. The Park Board also really appreciated this effort of the five-year look ahead. It's not something we had required from previous directors, and we really appreciate it. And thank you, Eric, and your staff for going to that level of work. Thank you. It really makes our long-term decisions a little easier.
I will say that Carol and her team in finance, I probably went around with them four, five, six different times over the last two months, so they did an awesome job. I had to do quite a bit, but they did a lot more, so I appreciate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments, questions? So, thank you for the informational. Now, my recollection is we had tabled a motion for hiring back, where is it, three positions?
Yeah, so, it's a crew leader and two groundskeepers.
Okay. And so, would it be, I don't know how council wants to handle it. Do you want to take it off the table for our next meeting, or do you want to do that this evening?
I'll move to pull it off the table. Second.
We have a motion to untable that motion by Mike Went. We have a second, I'm sorry, Alderman Went. We have it by Alderman Waldron. So, now, we're reconsidering a motion, and I'm gonna lean on Janine. Janine, can you pull up that motion? That, do you have record of it? It was so long ago. I think it was like
It was in November.
Was it late November?
Because we originally talked about it at the October Saturday meeting, but I don't think it got tabled till November.
Your Honor, I think we have the time to look it up and bring it next week, or two weeks.
And we planned on bringing, if it got approved tonight, the two groundskeepers, the hiring of
Additional? Okay, then, look, so, we pulled it off the table. I think that we had to retable it for next week. Do you want to, do you want to change that, Alderman Went, to pull it off the table or adjust that table until next week, so we can put it on the agenda?
We can. I mean, it's from November seventeenth. I've got it here, but
Oh, good. Do you want to read it, Alderman Went?
Well, so, I think in the, I guess we probably need to also pick up, hold on one second. In the county agenda, it's loading, because I pulled up the minutes just to make sure that that was the date that we actually tabled it. The I think that was just part of a work session. Yeah, so, there wasn't any formal, I think it was just consideration of hiring those people was part of a discussion in the work session, and we just tabled the idea until the five-year, so.
Does that align with your recollection, or are you thinking that we formally made a motion the following meeting? That was it for the work session. Well, then, we'll just leave it for now, if you don't mind, and then we'll add it into next week's agenda, so that we can address it. And if there are additional positions, just And if there are additional positions, just make sure that, that Marty knows to get that on the agenda properly.
I can read this to you if you'd like. There was a motion.
Was there a motion? Okay, let's hear it.
Yeah. Uh, Barnes explained that the Park Board wishes to fill three positions, two additional groundskeepers and a crew leader in April, which would require an additional three hundred thousand dollars from General Fund Reserves. Alderman Potter moved to approve the modification to the proposed budget, seconded by Alderman Waldron. There was discussion. Alderman Went moved to table the motion until February to allow council time to review the five-year budget. And then it goes on a little bit, and there was a vote.
A vote to table it?
To table it. So we should have moved it from the table.
Okay. So, we're, we're now voting to pull that off of the table, so let's do a roll call on, uh, to pull it back onto the table, or back for consideration.
So Dirk, do we need a motion to re-
He did, we've got that, so we just need a roll call.
Okay. Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Walton?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. So now we're considering the motion, um, back on the table, and it was a motion by Alderman Potter, seconded by, I'm sorry, who was it seconded by?
Alderman Waldron.
Alderman Waldron. So we're considering that. Does everyone understand the motion that's being considered at this time? Any questions, concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Walton?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. So, so I think we're good. We might have to do it one more time, Dirk, on that type of motion. Do we need one more time, since it wasn't on the agenda for consideration?
Yeah, we'll bring it back and ratify all of this, but they can move forward.
Okay. Yep. Thank you so much, Eric, appreciate it. Uh, I would now like to open it up for public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening? Hearing none, let's close out of our committee of the whole meeting and go into our council agenda. Will we be having an invocation this evening, Alderman Parker?
I think that sounds like a great idea.
Okay. Let's begin with a pledge of allegiance, and we'll have an invocation by Alderman Parker. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for the many blessings our city has received at thy hands. We ask that you guide us in our deliberations this evening, and that you look over all of our first responders as they serve our community and our residents. We ask for your continued guidance and blessing. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Potter?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
Schoonmaker?
Present.
Walton?
Present.
Berg?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of committee of the whole council and executive session minutes of February second, twenty twenty-one. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill forty oh one dash twenty twenty-one, and special ordinance removing special ordinance forty oh one dash twenty eighteen from the table and designating the Prospect Park Pavilion located at fifteen eighty Thirty Fourth Avenue, Moline, Illinois, as a locally designated landmark. Resolutions. Council Bill ten twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an agreement with Express Services Incorporated doing business as express employment professionals to provide administrative services to fulfill temporary and seasonal staffing needs of city departments, and also provide the insurance and liability coverage requested for a one-year period commencing March first, twenty twenty-one. Council Bill thir, ten thirty dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the exception to the moratorium on hiring pursuant to Resolution ten fifty-one dash twenty twenty to hire one mechanic, two, and two mechanic, one positions. Council Bill ten thirty-one dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing an information technology, authorizing the information technology manager to execute a small municipal and county government enterprise agreement and Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated. Council Bill ten thirty-two dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a lease with Grind and Dine LLC, doing business as Java Lab Grind and Dine Cafe, permitting a portion of the Moline Public Library at thirty-two ten Forty First Street to be utilized as a coffee shop commencing March first, twenty twenty-one. Council Bill ten thirty-three dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement provided by the Rock River Valley Regional Sewerage System. Council Bill ten thirty-four dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an agreement with Strand Associates Incorporated to study long-term compliance of facilities at the South Slope Waste Water Treatment Plant for the amount of ninety-five thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. Council Bill ten thirty-five dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing an exception to the moratorium on hiring pursuant to Resolution ten fifty-one dash twenty twenty to grant staff the flexibility to recruit for and hire either a water plant mechanic operator or a water plant operator. Council Bill ten thirty-six dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a contract with Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities Incorporated for project number thirteen fifty-three, twenty twenty-one, patching program for the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. Council Bill ten thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a contract with Ostrom Painting and Sand Blasting Incorporated for project number thirteen forty-eight, twenty twenty-one, pavement marking program for the budgeted amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said budgeted, I should say for the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Well, you didn't, so, okay, hold on, the, uh, the actual item is, uh, for the, uh, awarding for the base bid and authorizing, this is the one I had, uh, I thought I'd gotten over to you, sorry. Uh, and authorizing the, uh, change, staff to negotiate change order one to add additional work for an amount of a contract sum not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you, Dirk. Council Bill ten thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a contract with McClintock Trucking and Excavating Incorporated for project number thirteen forty-two, utilities at Eighteenth Street B and Avenue of the Cities for the amount of six hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. Council Bill ten thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution adopting a policy and procedures concerning records retention and destruction. Council Bill ten forty dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a settlement agreement and lease, and release with Han Ready Mix Company for a release of funds held in escrow in the amount of eighty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents to Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities Incorporated. Council Bill ten forty-one dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing an exception to the moratorium on hiring and promotion pursuant to Resolution ten fifty-one dash twenty twenty to fill the legal services specialist vacancy through the promotion of Amy Saunders, Legal Assistant. Council Bill ten forty-two dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing an exception to the moratorium on hiring pursuant to Resolution ten fifty-one dash twenty twenty to hire seasonal park staff for the twenty twenty-one year.
Motion to approve the consent agenda? Parker?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Moyer. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Sorry, aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Walton?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty oh two dash twenty twenty-one, the ordinance amending Chapter Four, Alcoholic Liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances by adding Section four dash thirty-three twenty-five, Option eight, retailers onsite pouring, and amending Section four dash thirty-three seventeen, Option one, outdoor use, Section four dash thirty-three twenty-four, Option seven, retailers onsite outdoor special use, Section four dash thirty-two oh eight, license fees, and Section four dash thirty-three nineteen, Option three, retailers, I'm sorry, caterers retail. Council Bill forty oh two dash twenty twenty-one, a special ordinance granting a permanent waiver to Chapter twenty-eight Streets and Sidewalks of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section twenty-eight dash thirty-two hundred, when required, engineers' general responsibility, temporary certificate of occupancy variances, subparagraph A, and Chapter thirty-five zoning and land development, Section thirty-five dash forty-two eighteen sidewalks, and ten thousand, eight hundred dollar payment into the sidewalk fund in lieu of construction of sidewalk along Thirty-Eighth Avenue for property located at forty-one hundred Thirty-Eighth Avenue, Moline. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Janine.
You're welcome.
So I think now we'll turn to our council business. I'll go around the room, and if anybody has anything they wanna share with council, please speak up. We begin with Alderman Williams.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Parker?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Went?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Potter?
Um, yes, Your Honor. I'd like to address, um, comments that have been made recently in committee of the whole, and articles I've seen in the paper, um, regarding, uh, uh, some issues with, uh, former staff and, and some other issues with regarding TIFs and Project Colossus, or whatever we're calling it. And I wanna publicly let everyone know that I'm distancing myself from this, whatever this program is, or this, uh, ability to go after former staff, and s, those sorts of things. And I wanna begin by offering a, uh, a, a public apology to Kathy Carr for any personal or professional slight she may have felt by comments that have been made or inferences that have been made, that she somehow did something wrong. She served this community for a number of years and was, uh, uh, a diligent, uh, uh, employee, above reproach, um, brought us, uh, accounting awards on an annual basis. I'm, I'm, I'm willing to bet it probably happened every year that she was a finance officer. In addition, I, I think that, uh, comments made by, uh, uh, former administrator Max Einer, wondering, you know, the timing and the motives of this are, are pretty much dead on, and that this just continues this, uh, uh, willingness on behalf of some people in this body to, uh, to vilify and, uh, demean members of, 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 of our, uh, staff, former, and it, and it's just not helping. Um, it's gonna continue to make it difficult for us to attract additional talent, and I want no part of it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Potter. Alderman Moyer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Schoonmaker?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Waldron?
Yes, Your Honor, I wanna, uh, I was lucky enough today to get my first shot at my vaccine, and, uh, I also was fortunate to have the firefighter paramedics from Moline be the one to administer my shot. They did an excellent job today, it was very appreciative, they were very professional, as was Rock Island County and running it at the TaxSlayer Center. It seemed like a very efficient operation, and my thanks goes out to the firefighters. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Waldron. Alderman Berg?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. And I just wanted to turn my attention to our, our safety services. The responses over the weekend were challenging, and I'm very thankful for the service that you provide, both the Police Department and the Fire Department, in supporting our community when community members are stressed, and, and giving us the opportunity to be kept safe during those things. So I'm glad that everybody's, all of our, um, city personnel are safe, and that goes for Public Works as well, they assisted in, um, the retrieval of that vehicle. So, thank you so much for everything you do, no matter what the weather is. So, thank you.